Okay, it's 6:30. We will get started. This is the City of Fairway, Kansas. Our city council meeting for Monday, May 13th, 2024, is 6:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. There are, there's one announcement. We will be removing item number D from new business. That agreement, Nathan, is my understanding, hasn't been completed yet?
Uh, there's, yeah, we're still working through some things with legal.
Okay. So, we will remove that item for consideration this evening. Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations that I would like to read into the record this evening. The first concerns Police Week. This is for the National Police Week, whereas the United States Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Fairway, Kansas, play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Fairway, Kansas. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Fairway Police Department has evolved into a modern and progressive law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Melanie Hepple, Mayor of the City of Fairway, call upon all citizens in the City of Fairway, Kansas, and upon all civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. In the City of Fairway, I further call upon citizens of the City of Fairway to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Bated this 13th day of May, 2024. I would like to take a moment to observe Officer Jonah Oswald. If we'll take a moment of silence to remember Jonah and his family and our officers. Thank you. We are currently, as you all know, are considering a place within Fairway where we can memorialize Jonah Oswald and remember him and all the courageous acts that he did for us before he lost his life in the line of duty. We will continue to pursue that until we find a place that is appropriate. All right, the next proclamation is for Public Works Week. National Public Works Week, Advancing Quality of Life for All. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Fairway, Kansas. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Fairway to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, I, Melanie Hepple, Mayor of the City of Fairway, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, society, and quality of life, dated this 13th day of May, 2024. Bill, I know you are listening online this evening, and as Public Works Director, I would like to say thank you to you and your staff. If you please would pass that along to the staff and let them know how much we appreciate what they do every day for Fairway.
Will do, Mayor, thank you.
All right, we'll move along to the monthly reports of standing committees. And the fire chief is here this evening, Consolidated Fire District, number two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me back this evening. I have a brief report for you tonight, but first of all, you've probably noticed that there's a new quarterly report in your packet, and we wanted to redesign and focus on things that were important. We wanted to make sure that you, as the Council, got a picture of what was going on in the community in the first quarter, but also, we wanted to start publishing our response times and letting you know what those are up front so that you can see what a good job we're doing. And likewise, if we're not doing a great job, then we can be accountable for those. And so, we're happy to do that. Several things going on right now with the fire district. Number one, as I'm sure you are well aware, being budget season, we're deep into the budget for 2025, we're meeting some challenges just because, you know, what we've been told is that we can expect somewhere in the neighborhood of a six or six-and-a-half percent increase in property value district-wide, and that some of that will be contested. And so, really, you can count on something less than that. Unfortunately, when you start talking about what we're dealing with, with the increases of equipment and fire trucks and all those things, we're finding that our long-term initiatives are a little bit underfunded. So, we're working through some of those things. We're trying to do what we can to be responsible in the budget in those areas, but also plan for the future and make sure that we can replace our apparatus and our equipment and keep everybody safe. So, we'll have more on that, but I'm sure everybody's going through the same thing with budget challenges right now. So, our, I mentioned to you a number of meetings ago that we were seeking a remodel and expansion at the 63rd and Mission Road location, which serves most of Fairway. We've gone through a request for qualifications that was very structured. We had six really qualified bidders that bid on that project for us, and we've made a selection. Herron Companies will be doing that for us, and the design-build process will start as soon as we get the contract approved by our board. Probably about the 28th of this month, we'll kick it off. We're going to be personally involved, our work group is going to be personally involved in the design of the station for a couple of reasons. First of all, so we get everything out of it that we need to get, but also so we can make those decisions about, eh, that's something, that's a luxury we don't necessarily need or we can save some money in an area. So, our group's really engaged, and our board chair is sitting in on that process as a liaison from our board. So, we're pretty excited about getting moving with that project. Engine 22, which is the first due engine in Fairway, is due for replacement. It's actually going to be very, very due by the time we're able to get one. They're telling us 48 to 50 months before we can actually get a fire truck if we order it right now. And so, we're in the process of putting our board packet together this week, which will include the purchase of a new fire engine for Station 22, and that will hopefully get approved next week, and then we'll place an order which will be built in 48 to 50 months, which seems like a very long time, but that's a problem throughout the industry right now. Both labor and parts availability is to blame for that. So, what you might see on the report here is that we've had a few more fire calls the first quarter than we did last year, and while we never like to see that, the positive end of that is what I do like to see is that our total response time to fire calls is about four minutes and 19 seconds from the time that we get the call, which I'm very, very happy with. Takes about a minute to dress out and get ready to be on the truck and out the door, and we're getting dressed out and out the door in a minute and 12 seconds. So, I think that's literally just about as fast as you can physically do it, and really, really pleased with the performance there. You'll see that we've had a pretty good increase in EMS calls. That is not unique to Fairway. I think I've reported in the past to the Council that we saw an overall 12-and-a-half percent increase in call volume last year in the whole district. We're seeing that trend continue and even exponentially increase this year. So, what you might see on there is the hazmat calls. I want to clarify that for you, that that could be a CO investigation, that could be a gas leak, that could be, you know, several things that constitute a hazardous situation. And so, we have had a substantial increase in those. And I don't really have my finger on what that is yet, but we're looking into that, and I'll have better information for you as we move forward into the second quarter of the year. And then, the rest of the things, you know, the other calls area seems to have gone down a little bit. I will tell you, we had some high utilizers in Fairway who were calling us for lift assists and just trouble, you know, sustaining at home. Unfortunately, we've lost one or two of those to death, and so, that's decreased our call volume in that area. I certainly don't like to see that, but that kind of explains why we've seen a drop in those kind of calls, so. So, right now, we happen to be fully staffed. We're in good shape. We have three impending retirements coming up first of the year, and so, we're starting to look at what that process to replace those people is going to look like. Right now, our intern program has been wildly successful. We're about to evaluate our third intern that came through the program that we started a couple of years ago. It's yielded us several really good employees and some of those diverse employees that we really felt like we needed to get our, an opportunity to get in front of. And so, what that means is we'll have to hire two others to meet the level of retirements that we have coming, but fortunately, we remain a destination department, and recruiting is not a difficult thing for us. So, we'll begin working on that this summer and being ready to have an academy this fall. So, outside of that, I would be happy to stand for any questions at the Council house.
Any questions for the chief? Jenna?
Jenna, Ward four. First of all, I like the new format a lot. Love the colors. It's really readable.
Thank you. I'll let Joanna know. She's done a great job.
Yes, that's great. Second question, with the active adult community coming onboard next year, will there be increased headcount from your perspective to handle that increased population?
So, great question. I think that, from our perspective, the number of calls that we anticipate getting out of that won't increase our staffing right now, but I am very, very thankful to the City of Fairway for, and to Nathan, for the work that he's done in, when that was prepared and the abatements or the TIF was done on that, the work that he did with us to make sure that we were able to serve the community in the best way possible. So, Fairway really kind of set the tone for most of our other cities and set a model of behavior that we hope carries on. So, thank you.
We're glad to lead the way.
I love it.
Any other questions? Yes, David?
Go ahead, Kelly, go ahead.
Okay, Kelly?
It's Kelly in Busick, Ward one. Chief, do you anticipate having to increase your budget after next year for new employees because benefits have increased, healthcare has increased, and so forth? Can you address that? Thank you.
Great questions. Yeah, no, good questions. One of the things that we face every year is trying to remain competitive in the marketplace with employees, and so, our board has really taken an approach that they don't want us to be way over the top on compensation, but as a destination department, we really like to settle into that number two or number three spot in the area as far as compensation goes. Part of that is benefits. You're right, for the last several years, health insurance and everything else, those costs are just out of control. Fortunately, we, last year, made a switch to a Health and Wellness Trust, which is a national initiative that is provided by the International Association of Firefighters, and we were able to get into a health trust that helps us control those costs. So, where we've had proposals anywhere from 19 to 37 percent increases over the last several years individually, this year, we saw an 8 percent increase in our insurance costs. And so, through working through the International Association of Firefighters, we've been able to kind of control those costs for the short term, and hopefully, that'll remain for the next couple of years, so.
David?
Thanks, Chief. David Watkins, Ward three. On the station expansion, what's the overall timeline on that project?
Great question. We hope, once we break ground, that that will be done in 16 to 18 months. I'll have a better idea once we determine what we're able to use in the way of square footage and what has to be added, and then, once we know what that looks like, then we'll be a lot better, and I will be happy to come back and report to you what that looks like and what the timeline will look like and what the process will look like, because that's an active fire station that has to remain active through the build. And so, my firefighters are onboard, they're, they know it's going to be uncomfortable during the middle of a construction project to live there, but they also know that we have to serve the public to the best degree possible, and we're going to make sure that we do that from there. Yeah, thank you. I'll get you a better answer once I see that timeline.
Well, just as long as it's not 48 to 60 months like the new truck.
I hope not. I sure hope not.
Anyone else?
If I could mention one more thing for anybody who's available, this Saturday, we have an open house at our Station 23 at 7810 Mission Road. Anybody who's available, be welcome. We'd love to see you. And that, we take any proceeds from donations from that, and we put it into the back-to-school with a firefighter program, which helps underprivileged kids get their school supplies and get ready to go back to school in August. So, we'll be doing that on Saturday from 9:30 to 11:00.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you having me.
Yep. Administration and Finance, Nathan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the administration report. Just a few things to note there. At our last meeting on the 26th, we talked about the 2025 budget, and that is really the focus of most of what I'm doing these days, is working on the city's 2025 budget. As a part of the administration budget, we talked about adding pet waste stations throughout the city, and we are going to be moving forward with that. You can see in the report, the total cost is about $6,800 to increase from our current level at the parks to, which is one at each, or two at Peterson Park and one at Kathy's Park. We're going to add about seven to eight more throughout the city on city right-of-way. That cost is going to be about $6,800 annually to have a company maintain those for us. The committee discussed ways to cover that cost and decided that we'd be increasing the licensing fees for dogs to cover those costs. So, that will be part of the 2025 budget. The fee structure will be set in December with the fee schedule that we will put before you in December for 2025. The one thing I will note that was, I did not have at the time of our meeting, we do have a proposal to repaint the public spaces here in City Hall. That total is about $7,100 for the chambers, the multipurpose room, hallways, and upstairs hallways, and that's floor-to-ceiling. So, that'll be the first time we've repainted floor-to-ceiling since moving in in 2017. So, I've added that into the budget. And then, the other piece, the other increase that I had to make was for insurance. I aired in the property and liability policy, we paid that annually in June, and I made the estimate for 2025 off what we paid in 2023, not what we're paying in 2024. So, in effect, I had to increase the budget for that line item by about $30,000. What we are seeing and what we're hearing from our property and liability carrier, which was Midwest Public Risk, as the industry standard, is seeing about a 20 percent increase in property and liability across the board due to the rising costs of building, construction, reconstruction, repairs, and that sort of thing. So, that was a substantial increase on our property and liability. So, I've made those adjustments, that they will be reflected when we see the budget again at the Administration and Finance Committee. As for finance, we are seeing, for the third month in a row now, that sales tax is at or slightly below, so we're not still trending up, or we seem to be leveling off on sales tax collection, which we knew that would come. We're still doing very well as far as being above budget for the year, but just an FYI, we'll be watching those trends, and it's a trend that's occurring throughout the county right now. So, with that, at the Administration and Finance Committee meeting at the end of this month, we will be, the Council will get their first look at the full draft budget for the general fund, all four departments and transfers, so we will discuss that coming up. The last thing that I'll mention for Administration and Finance is just today, the home on 62nd Street that was condemned in December has reached a state where it can be reoccupied. So, the residents were moving back in this afternoon, actually. So, that, that, there are two outstanding things. One will be addressed by the end of this week, and the other, we're giving them until October 1st, but otherwise, the interior of the home has been completely, is meeting code satisfactorily. So, that is done.
Any questions for Nathan? Thank you for your report, Nathan. The police report will stand as submitted by Chief Thurlow. Are there any questions that maybe Nathan can answer? Okay. Public Works? Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. I will also let my report stand as submitted. The one thing I would like to update is the CIP for this year. Weather permitting, which I do not have a lot of faith in anymore, Thursday and Friday, they are going to start milling, and Friday and Saturday, do all of paving. So, hopefully, within the next week or so, the majority of the construction will be done for the 2024 CIP. Be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Council, any questions for Bill? Yeah, Jenna?
Jenna, Ward four. Hi, Bill. Sorry to nudge, but I was curious, streetlights, if we have any updates on that?
I believe Nathan may be able to give you a brief update offline.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
I hope you get to feeling better soon.
You and me both.
Parks and Rec, we'll let Bryce's report stand as submitted. Any questions for Nathan concerning Parks and Rec? All right, great. Monthly reports to special committees, Tree Board?
No report.
Bill?
No report.
Nathan? Okay. Public comment for consent agenda items only. Nathan, do we have anyone in the audience online?
Nope.
All right. I will close the public comment for consent agenda items. These items are determined to be routine enough to be acted on in a single motion. However, this does not preclude discussion. If a council member requests, an item may be removed from the consent agenda for further consideration in separate motion. Item A, under consent agenda, approve minutes of the previous regular city council meeting. Item B, approve claims and appropriations, ordinance number 1804 for April of 2024. Does anyone wish to remove an item or have any questions concerning the consent agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I moved that we approve the minutes from the previous city council meeting, along with the ready to be clicked.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve items A and B under consent agenda. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously. All right, new business. Item A, consider site plan for 6010-6014 Mission Road, a commercial exterior renovation. Nathan?
Yes, this is for the former grooming business on Mission Road, just so everybody knows where that is. The property owner is just completing an exterior renovation of the building at this time. There's a likelihood that there will be a tenant finish that will be coming down the road. The council's action there would be to approve any exterior signage for that tenant finish, but for now, it's just because it is a commercial property, everything that happens exterior comes back before planning commission and council. So, the planning commission is recommending approval of the exterior renovation for 6010 to 6014.
All right. Hopefully, we all had a chance to look at that. Any questions for Nathan? Lee?
Lee Story, Ward one. What's the timeline on that, Nathan? Do you know?
Well, as I understand it, they had to go back before planning commission for the exterior renovation because it had been over a year since the planning commission last approved. So, they would have a year to complete the process again, or they have to go back to planning commission again.
Okay, thanks.
I should say, once they, if they, if a building permit is issued, they'll have six months to complete the work, once it's issued.
Anyone else? Okay. Assuming we still have no one online, I'll ask for a
Nope.
Okay, a motion, no public comment concerning this site plan.
Motion, I move to approve the site plan for 6010-6014 Mission Road, commercial exterior renovation.
There's been moved and seconded that we approve this site plan as submitted. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously. Item B, consider site plan for 6,000 Mission Road, replacement of commercial wall signs for VCA Fairway Animal Hospital. Nathan?
Coincidentally, next door is wanting to put up some new signs, so this has also been through planning commission. Again, any exterior signage for commercial properties has to be approved by the planning commission and the city council, so planning commission is recommending approval.
All right, any discussion or questions from council? All right, I'm assuming no one has joined us for public comment. All right, is there a motion concerning this site plan?
Mayor, I move that we approve item B on the new business agenda, which is the, replacing the current signs on the VCA Fairway Animal Hospital with new signs on the sides and removing the front sign, well, the front silhouettes without replacing them.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the site plan as submitted for 6,000 Mission Road. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously. Item C, consider ordinance number 1805, an ordinance amending the Fairway development ordinances pertaining to building regulations to add requirements for construction, site, fencing, and screening, adding section 15-822 to the Fairway development ordinances. Okay, Nathan?
Yeah, the planning commission has spent several months discussing this topic, and this is to require new construction, meaning a tear-down rebuild, install fencing along the property line, and then screen it to essentially provide some visual block of the construction site while construction is taking place. There was discussion with the planning commission about whether or not they do it for additions and remodels, or if it was just for new construction, and the planning commission has decided for now just to make it based on new construction, so either demolition or construction of a new primary dwelling on a lot. So, it is So, um, it is going to require the, the, the chain link, cause the material they call out, but it can be similar material, and then there does have to be a vinyl screening on that. Um, and, uh, in the proposed code, it says that there can be no logos or anything like that on the screening. Now, um, so that means it would, it would not be able to be similar to what, uh, you all approved for forty-two-ten with the, uh, sign for the Fieldston. So, this would just be plain, uh, solid color, uh, screening that would be applied to the fence to block view of the site, and then each night it would have to be secured.
And I believe, in addition, safety was the primary reason for the fence.
Yes, yes, we have had some, some, and safety and, and privacy. We've had some incidents where, um, I will call them trespassers, although no one has been charged, uh, with people going onto construction sites, uh, for a variety of reasons, and this will help prevent that. Obviously, a construction site is not a safe place for anyone to be wandering around.
Okay, any questions for Nathan? Jenna?
I do.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, Joe Levin, Ward Three. Nathan, I, in reading the, uh, backup material that the, the Planning Commission had, there was discussion about, uh, remodels or additions, and there was a, I think a debate between twenty-five percent, fifty percent is the trigger points. Uh, has the Planning Commission tabled that for the time being, or is it coming down the road?
Right now, I believe it's tabled.
Okay.
Jenna?
Yeah, thank you for providing the minutes, that was super helpful context. Um, there was, I saw on there, there was a question about how much it would cost, and I didn't, I wasn't sure if that was, um, final, if we were able to see how much that cost, or there was just estimates?
I don't have that information.
Abby called, the minute said that Abby called a company, and I believe it was eighteen hundred dollars.
For two hundred feet.
For two hundred feet?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I was, now I'm trying to remember, but...
There was a cost, there was a cost estimate in the Planning Commission minutes.
It was a cost estimate, I wasn't sure if it was, you know, what it was based on.
And then Abby called.
And then Abby called.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
To verify, yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, questions, comment, um, on the, I've noticed a couple houses have already been doing this, even though it's not required, maybe because they're used to doing work in privileged admission hills where it is required. Uh, we are still going to monitor the sites for excessive junk, so to speak, building up on the property site.
Yeah.
Cause it'll be a little harder to see, thankfully, but we still don't want that to just mean they can just scatter stuff all over.
Right, no, uh, uh, Public Works will continue to ha, and as well as our community ser, our community development director will continue to have unfettered access to the sites. Uh, our right-of-way specialists will continue to inspect for erosion control and the silt, uh, filled, the silt fence, along with the tree protection fences. Those will all continue as they, as they do now.
And, and, and this isn't directly on point, but, uh, it does talk about trying to coordinate all of the various things, tree protection fencing, this new screening requirement, erosion control. Uh, we did receive an email recently from a resident who doesn't like our orange-colored tree protection motif, um, and I've had several complaints from residents also, that they, can't we just do green or something like that? So I would throw it out that maybe we could consider encouraging Public Works or whomever to switch to a less glaring color than orange on the tree protection.
We can certainly do that. I think, yeah, what you'll see here now is a lot of times, the right, right, the right-of-way trees are gonna be within the perimeter fencing. So, if they may, they'll have fencing within fencing with the tree protection fence, and then the, the perimeter fence around that. So, um, for at least new builds, you won't see that orange fencing, at least as visibly as you do now. But as far as the remodel and additions, we can certainly suggest that they go with a different color.
I know, wrote, one resident that would be very happy if we went away from that color.
Yeah, Lee?
Uh, Lee Story. So will this, uh, if approved, will it apply retroactively to projects that are ongoing, or is...
No, the ordinance would be just looking forward.
Okay.
It'd be for any, the plans may have already been approved, it would be looking forward with any new permits issued. So someone may have had plans approved three months ago, that, they would not, if they've not pulled their permit, no. So they would have to add the fencing to their plans so that we could approve that. Now, there is the, the time it takes to publish, so it'll be thirty days from the time, uh, when we can get it published, is what, is what we have to wait for.
I, I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the work on this. I, it's, for me, it's not as easy of a, um, agreement or affirmation. I, I have currently three homes, two diagonal from me, and one at the end of the street who are under construction, and I'm not excited about having three chain-linked fences around me that anyone can jump over, anyone can climb into, you can't be seen behind those fences. So I, I just, I wanna make sure that, um, and I realize my thoughts may not prevail, but, well, having lived experience with this, only in six months, but three at once, um, I, I acknowledge that we, we all manage risks, but a fence may not solve everything, may cause different problems, and from what I've observed, and it may just be the way my street is, or way that corner is, I don't know how some of these delivery trucks will really be able to perform some of their duties. I mean, there were times when my street was blocked for ten or fifteen minutes with, you know, vehicles that are literally so long, they can't really navigate, and they have to angle and back up, and angle and back up, and with the, the length of the opening for the fence, um, I just, I, I appreciate all the res, I appreciate all the work, but I don't think that this is without its own complicating factors that could delay work in a day, or could, you know, could cause other delays on the, the street with the number of delivery and excavation trucks and cement trucks. So, I just wanted to offer that, after living through it, I have two diagonal from me. One day I had to, I had to literally drive out over my lawn to get out to the curb to drive. So, and it's unusual, you don't usually have three in a row, right? I mean, that's unusual anyway, but, um, I, I don't know, I kinda, ironically, on the fence, I guess, about this. I don't, I mean, I'm usually like, it's, you know, good to go for anything, but I, I worry this has its own problems, putting up fences that no one can see behind because it has a filter, so.
Um, just real quick, thinking about David's comment, maybe the color change should be taken back to the Planning Commission as well. I mean, I assume, uh, orange is the color so that construction, um, you know, trucks and vehicles see it and don't run into a tree. So, we wouldn't want it too camouflage.
Question?
Yes, Jenna?
I guess based on Tanya's comment, did that come up at all in the Planning Commission?
I don't know. I, I, I wasn't, I, I don't follow the Planning Commission very closely.
I'm sorry, Jenna, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I just asked if, if these concerns, if had been thought about by the Planning Commission at all.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I briefly perused it, and I think, uh, it was touched on, ju, exactly like you said, there's gonna be consequences that, you're trying to solve something, you're gonna create something else. But, I mean, there, and, I, I guess I'm not opposed to it, but there are other cities that have been doing this, and have been doing it for a while, and I, I don't necessarily hear about those issues in those cities.
Anything else? All right, assuming there are no public comment. Okay, we'll, uh, entertain a motion for ordinance number eighteen oh five.
Uh, Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance eighteen oh five, an ordinance amending the fairway development ordinances pertaining to building regulations to add requirements for construction, site fencing, and screening, adding sections fifteen dash eight twenty-two to the fairway development ordinances.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance number eighteen oh five. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, there were six yeses and two nos. Okay, next on the agenda is the governing body comment. During this time, members of the governing body will give, will be given the opportunity to speak about matters related to the city. No formal action will be taken during this time. Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, today, uh, I received some correspondence from Nathan, who, who was in touch with a group of people that, I'll give a little background, uh, shortly after, uh, Officer Oswald's death, uh, the concept of, of a tree commemor, commemoration, uh, and I thought of planting trees as well, but, uh, in another, another site, and we've, Nathan and I had talked to a group of guys that are, are active in, 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 in actually planting trees. Uh, the concept was to put a tree or, or, or a, a, a group of trees in Powell Gardens, and I think that, uh, is still alive. Nathan has yet to, and I will meet with them later, but I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that it's not a dead issue, and, and that we, part of the use of that language, but, uh, to keep, uh, it's an independent site. I think there was still the concept of, of tree in fairway, but this would be a group of trees in, in the, uh, in the Powell Gardens, and, uh, we'll keep you advised as our progress.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? David?
Yeah, I just was, uh, very appreciative, I don't know who from staff or who contributed, uh, to the email that went out today, but, um, was very appreciative of whoever did it, it struck a chord, and I thought it was well done. Thank you.
That was Nathan's drafting. I listened to him read it to me this morning, and it brought tears to my eyes, so it was very well done, Nathan. Elian?
Uh, Kelly Ambusick, Ward One. I just wanna thank Parks and Rec and the mayor and, uh, the city for Arbor Day. Finally got to do it, it was not raining after how many postponements, but very exciting in that we will be planting our tree in the fall and/or early winter, whatever we, whichever is best for the tree. So thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
Dan, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I received an email last week from, uh, I believe a council person in Roland Park, I guess I did not vet them to make sure, um, where, uh, they were asking for my input, um, in terms of the, uh, traffic, um, new traffic, fast traffic, uh, with the, um, active adult center. They also wanted to start talking about, uh, crosswalk. So I copied Jerry and the mayor and Nathan and the chief, uh, but I really don't see it as a Ward Two issue, but I, I think I made it clear back to them that I'm infrastructure after everything is settled down, not in the middle of it. So just making everybody, everybody else aware.
Jenna?
Yeah, so the new bathroom is so awesome. When I was there this weekend, um, I kid you not, a woman drove up, an older appearing woman, and she was so excited, she wanted to just check out the bathroom, and she was all dressed up, and it was so cute, and I'm just so happy that we have it, that's it. I don't know, I don't know if she was all dressed up in pink, if you're listening.
Oh, I think that was my mom.
Really?
Yes.
It was what?
Yes, that was my mom, Joyce Keys. I was late arriving home, so she couldn't come in my house. So she's like, well, I'll just go to the park and hang out and wait for you. So, that was my mom.
Oh.
She had a new pink jacket, so.
Oh.
I had no idea that.
Aw, this was a good council meeting. Anyone else? All right, is there a motion for adjournment? Are we there yet? Oh, no. Well, public comment. Okay, no one's there yet. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
All right, we are adjourned.